Father, we come to you, we come as humble, sincere, obedient orders we know how. Thanking you, Lord, for the opportunity to be in the meeting. Thank you, Lord, that we have an opportunity to lift our voice to you. The greatest honor in life is to be able to wake up in the morning, fall down on our knees. Thank you for what you've done for us. Help us, Lord, that we make wise decisions, honest decisions, and not counter ourselves, but, Lord, that our decisions would affect senior blood in every individual in town. Father, we praise you. Jesus, we don't name him. Amen.
Mr. Watson, with his latest pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all visitors for coming out tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February ninth, 2021 meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the February ninth, 2021 meeting. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Since I had time to look at the bills. Do I have a motion to approve the payment of bills?
My motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of bills. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Sheriff, I'd like to go ahead.
Mary Phillips, Council, I appreciate you letting me come down here. I had a call here a couple of weeks ago and a question about litter. And I guess it's just in general, the litter that we're seeing around the sides of the road and everything. And I thought I would come down because that's a question that we're getting a lot about, questions on Facebook. I got a call this morning from a gentleman who said, well, you know, it's all up and down the four lane. Yes, I do. I've seen it. And so I thought this would be an opportunity to tell you why that we're seeing maybe more now than what we've seen before. And, you know, in the years past, litter in our county, seeing the dump sites, that's something that I had a very big passion for, trying to clean up a lot of the areas of our county. And through the years, we've done a lot of efforts. We've had our teen center in Richlands that's helped us clean up some high school students. We've had Boy Scouts in different areas of the county. And I've had probably most of the officers that work with the sheriff's office who've come out on their days off and put together teams and cleaned up dump sites around the county. And the gentleman I have with me, this is Neil Turley, this is Captain Neil Turley. He oversees our detective division, criminal and narcotics. But he also works with one of the parts of our litter program. Back a while back, the county gave us funding to put up hidden cameras throughout the county on dump sites. And he's the one that works very hard on that. And we have people that watch those cameras hours at a time for tag numbers. So we've got that going on. But in probably July, August of 2019, the state stopped us from picking up litter that year. The state will pay for officers to come out and take out inmates and pick up trash. So in July of 2019, they put a hold on that. They said for a while, well, when that opened back up, that was around March, when we were all in the midst of COVID. And so at that time, our trustees in the jail, the regional jail locked the trustees down. So they've been on, any trustees that are there are just inside. They're only allowed to work inside the facility. Nobody's been allowed to take them out. So that's been a year, this month makes a year, that no trustees have been allowed to do any outside work. So what we're seeing is what our county, I guess, would have looked like had we not had inmates through the years to be able to do that. The trash state ends up building up. So looking at that, I've talked to the superintendent of the regional jail. And he says, when the inmates get vaccinated and those trustees get vaccinated, that they will have no problem letting them go back out with law enforcement to pick up trash, do special projects. I know we've been down here for a lot of special projects through the years. And he said they'll have no problem letting those inmates back out to do that. So we've been trying to figure out, you know, what to do in the meantime. Captain Turley, we're still working with the hidden cameras for dump sites, but that's for places where cars are pulling up and throwing stuff out, not just the cars driving up the four lane throwing out a Hardee's bag. Those cameras don't, can't be used for that purpose. We recently had a meeting with our local probation and parole office here at Cleckville Hill. And they've agreed and they're going to have their probationers meet us twice a week to go out and start picking up trash. So that'll be a little different than the inmates, but hopefully it will work out and we can start getting these roads and the four lane and then move on to secondary roads down our county and try to get some things picked up. So they're going to be meeting us on some Wednesdays and Saturdays throughout the month and we're going to start working with them. We also, Mr. Plaster, our convocative attorney, has started a program in his office, a workforce program. And they're building up people who have to do so many community service hours. And right now, they only have a few people. But as that builds up, what we're hoping is those are also people that we'll be able to take out with the deputies to start picking up trash in different areas too. So that's our plan and that's what I wanted to come down here and tell you. I know, like I said, I get a lot of phone calls and we see a lot of messages on Facebook. I know it looks awful and I guess where we've spearheaded and done so much through the years to try to curtail it now, now that we don't have inmates and it's building up, people are looking at the sheriff's office and saying, well, what are you going to do? And in the years past, you know, that's not something that is technically our responsibility, but something that I've been happy to do because I live in this county too and my family lives in this county and I want it to look the best that it can. I think we have one of the most beautiful places in the state of Virginia. And it has always upset me to go around some nice country road and you go around a curve and because it's just a nice little empty spot, someone takes it and throws all the trash in. When we video people in the past that we've called and we even did a video and put it on Facebook and it didn't make those people very happy at all. And they said we should have other things to do besides putting out cameras watching for them. But I think that's just as important as anything else that we do because it makes it mad to see them throw out trash and disregard our roadways and our land the way that they do. But that's our plan. That's what we're doing right now. So hopefully in the next few weeks, you'll see us, you'll see those probationers out with us. And then we're still working on the other things with our cameras and the dump sites as well. What we're also doing is partnering up with some people. We have one restaurant in Tassau that's partnering up and going to go out and volunteer and to pick up some trash in their area as well. I've had some citizens that have called me and have been willing to pick up trash in their street if we provide the litter bags for them, the trash bags for them. And we'll do that. We just have to go behind and make sure that that's what those bags are being used for, the trash on the road. But we've been happy to do that and help some people out who want to clean up their own streets. If you have any questions or any suggestions, like I said, without the inmates labor, we've been trying to figure out alternate, alternate ways and things to do.
I do have a question, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
When you find someone, when you have someone on camera that has thrown out trash, what happens at that point and have you actually metered out some punishment to those and had done?
Well, we, when we catch that on camera and if we're able to get a tag number description, we've been able to make charges on that once we run the tag, find out who it is. And most of the time, the people will admit because they're looking at their cell phone on camera when we print out pictures. And we have charged several people. And what happens in court sometimes is a little different. In the beginning, we were seeing fines of maybe $25 and we didn't like that low fine. So now what our convocative attorney's office is doing is adding on the time that we've taken and the equipment we've had to use to capture them and add, and asked, they ask the judge to add on that extra fee for the time and trouble that we've gone through. Because it is a lot of time and trouble to go through all the videos, to go out in undercover vehicles, go to some of these places, take two people so one can watch and one can hide the camera. It does take a lot of time and trouble just to try to catch that one person. We've had some problems at some of our transfer stations where they close up at night, the gates are closed and people come and just toss out trash. And then when Sand Tech has to come to empty it, the next day they're having to move all the bags of trash just to open the gates to try to get to the dumpsters. So we're seeing a lot of problems in a lot of different areas. But we have no problems charging once we can, we can get that on video. And we tell people if people see somebody that's littering and want to help get that tag number and if you're willing to give us the information and identify that person, we'll charge them.
Sheriff, you mentioned, when I talked to you about 10 days ago, maybe that the vaccines were supposed to come in that week.
Yeah, they, the.
Have they gotten in yet or?
I haven't talked to him since me and you talked that day. He had gotten in a, when I talked to the superintendent, they had gotten in a large amount of the vaccine and then for some reason it got pulled away, got recalled. And they were waiting and they said it would probably be a couple of weeks, so maybe about now. But he said they were waiting for another batch of the vaccines to come in. And he said the number that they gave them the first time would have been enough to do the population that they have to by law, 65 and over. But it would also be enough to do those trustees to start letting them go outside and do outside work.
I'm curious how many inmates you have and of those, how many are qualified to pick up trash?
Well, there's a guideline when someone is locked up and has to spend six months in jail, 12 months. You know, these aren't the ones that are set to go off to DOC for long periods of time. And then there's a series of questions that they have to ask, they have to look at if they ever have, if the crime is some type of violent crime, some type of sexual crime, those are not eligible to even be a trustee program. So there's certain guidelines they have to go through and depend on what's, and they've already have to be sentenced so they know. If you've got someone who's been sentenced to six months in jail, they're not going to try to escape and look at a five-year sentence to get out of a six-month sentence. So they have to meet that eligibility requirements before they can be on a trustee program.
I noticed today when I came back to Bristol, there were several, I guess they were inmates in Russell County, around Lebanon that were picking up. I didn't know if they fell into it.
They're not inmates. That's a work program that they have in Russell County as well. Believe me, I called about that real quick when I heard they had inmates in Russell County picking up trash because it's the same regional jail that covers Russell County, our county. And I said, now if they let them out for Russell County, I need to know. But that is a work program that they have in Russell County and that they have several people that's involved in and enough people that they can take them out and do. And that's what I said, if our work program that Mr. Plaster has been working on builds up enough, we can use those people as well. But yeah, it's not inmates, inmates down there either. When I called the superintendent that day, he said, you're one of many sheriffs who have called me about this. And he said, we want to get them back out there to help you all out as soon as, soon as we can. So, you know, I believe every other county around is having the same problem with that lack of inmate labor, not having them out there to pick up trash and do a lot of the things that the inmates do. But you, we get some people in there that are very willing to get out and work and pick up trash and clean up dump sites just to be able to go outside and do something outside.
So if we had a community cleanup day, would that be okay with guidelines maybe? I mean, if you're just voluntary throughout the community?
Yes.
That would be okay? You all could provide the trash bags?
Yep. Yes, we could.
Could you also provide on the four lane to direct the traffic to make it easier to get some of those places up there? Some of those places are pretty.
Yeah, if we want to work on and coordinate something like that, yeah, we could, we could have people come out to be in cars up on the corner and help the traffic go by so that no one gets hurt. Yes, we'd be happy to do that.
That's, that's nothing as dangerous.
And even some, you know, we have our assigned highway program that the circuit court has probationers work on, but we usually don't have them on the four lane because those are, you don't have the, the deputy cars aren't supervised. So that's just a dangerous, you know, for them to be up there.
Where do you get those grabbers that you grab the trash?
Cherry's been some order, don't you think?
Okay, yes.
Depends, you let me miss your signal.
First of all, I want to say we do appreciate what you're doing and not only in cleanup, this part of the county, we're very pleased with your service. And we drove up Sunday up Middle Creek. We counted 33 tires in the road. I feel like you're probably worried. Is there some word, I've got three of them besides myself, we would go get the tires, stack them up, take them anywhere, here's a place we could take them. I don't, they're not, and I'm not, in favor of picking them up and paying somebody $250 to let us unload them.
Right.
But if it was a place, do you know of any word?
What I can do is let me check on that and see, and see if it's a situation like that where someone is helping us pick up something that's been thrown out like that. If we can do that, I would think we should be able to do that and not have to worry about paying the fee or anything like that if we're cleaning up.
We have got between Middle Creek and going down Seaboard, probably over 200 tires laying within reach. And we've wondered if we could get them, you know, I don't know what to do with them.
And we've had several areas where tires have been thrown out. Indian Paint, we've got some problems up there where a lot of tires have been thrown out. We've had to go clean that up. But I'll find that out and I'll let you know.
Probably every house up Middle Creek, I personally went to them and said, if they saw anybody taking tires up, let me know when we get pictures of them. That's a little hard to do as you already know.
Right, right.
But we are willing to pick them up, haul them everywhere we need to take them.
Okay.
If it's blue fiore or tan or lampe or.
Okay.
We just didn't know what to do with them.
I'll check on that, but I think if we're doing some type of a cleanup like that, we should be able to do that without a fee or anything. So I may be speaking out of term from the county, but I will certainly check on that.
I certainly understand if you couldn't, but if there is a way of doing it, I appreciate it.
Okay, okay.
How, Mr., do you guys receive any help or assistance in your calls from the state?
Yes, the Highway Department, VDOT, the program that they have is they'll pay for an officer to come out on his day off and take the inmates out and supervise the pickup. And then, and then we go back and pick up the bags afterwards. So they have that program and that's what we were doing up until, I said, when the inmates got locked down. So we've not had, that money was there after, after March and for us to use, but we had nobody that could use it. Because we can have the inmate labor. But when the inmates released, that, we actually talked to them yesterday, VDOT, and they suggested, you know, the funding is going to be there and it's going to be there. You know, we foresee the same amount being there in July. We don't see a problem right now. And so just if the inmates get released, we'll have that funding to get back out there and do that. All right. Well, thank you all very much for letting me come down and leave it. Captain Turley, myself, and the sheriffs, we share your concern. And as far as organizing something with the traffic, I'll get up with Chief Brown and we'll work together to make sure we help out with what you need.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Chief Brown.
Chief Brown, thank you, sir. Just be quick. I don't have to do that whole lot. John kind of caught me off guard. Other than singing my praises, the man sitting beside you, Mr. Mayor, I'm still singing his praises all the way to the bank. Marshall Sek and I had the privilege to be invited to the drug court graduation. I know Mr. Radnoff is quite familiar with a group called Sotera. They have a recovery house they're working on in Tassau. And they're, they're requesting, looking for somebody to donate a ping pong table. I mean, they, they made the remark that can't have a recovery house without a ping pong table. I'm an old military guy, so an old military barracks can't have military barracks without a ping pong table. But I was going to ask if the council might look at allowing the town. I've got 599 funds available that I could, I could use as well. Maybe chipping in together and getting the ping pong table and getting it up to Ms. Hicks at the Sotera Recovery House. But that's, that's.
I've got one shot if you want it. I'll donate it.
What's that?
I got it from Brown.
Okay.
It's not ping pong though. It's the football, foosball.
They've got a foosball table.
They got foosball.
They got foosball, but they were just looking for a ping pong table.
Okay, ping pong, I don't know.
Chief came to me with his request. I told him I didn't see a problem with it, but I said, really? Make it more formal, pass the board. Well, they're wanting, they're wanting to do the photo op, you know, the town of Cedar Bluff donating the ping pong table and all that. I spoke to Ms. Hicks yesterday and let her know that I wasn't presenting tonight. Whatever y'all's decision, I can make contact with them tomorrow and start making some arrangements. It's up in, it's in Tassau, Chief. There's several places up there. You all just want to know exactly what I'm saying.
It's in Tassau and they're looking at nothing.
I thought they did an anger, but I didn't.
I mean, you all want to, I mean, ping pong table can run between $400 and $1,000. I mean, do you all want to do it up to or not, not to exceed maybe a certain number, maybe $800? I mean, I don't, you know.
$800 would be a good.
I think so, don't you?
Not very cheap, just not the most, yeah, but just kind of.
Is there a motion to donate a ping pong table up to $800 to Sotera?
My motion.
I second it.
All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Is there any public comments?
Yeah, right here, she's going to.
I guess that does.
Oh, you're fine.
I'm Angela. This is Eirell Bell. We work with Aflac Benefits. He's got some information. Just gonna give you all a little packet of some information. What we wanted to talk about was benefits for the employees of the team.
Right.
If you guys are familiar with Aflac, what we do, we're not health insurance, we're supplemental benefits. We help cover those gaps that the health insurance doesn't always cover. And why would you want to offer Aflac is because with today's landscape of healthcare, health insurance isn't almost never enough, especially if you have some type of cash drop problem. Cancer diagnosis, severe accident, heart attack, stroke, those types of things. We also offer disability plans to cover people's income if they're not able to work. We have life insurance. We pretty much have everything except for major medical, everything to complement your medical plan. Sure you want to be as good to your employees as you can and maintain top talent, keeping your people. And benefits is a big part of that to retain your employees. And that's why a lot of people are turning to supplemental benefits. I've put a few things in your packet. This first little page just talks about who Aflac is. We are the number one provider of voluntary benefits at the worksite. We have over, oh, almost a half a million companies that offer us sister supplemental benefits. More than 50 million people are insured with us and we've been in business for over 65 years. One of the most ethical companies. We make that list every year, Fortune 500 companies. So we've got the backbone. The second little pamphlet in your packet talks about what the need is for this type of program. Harvard study says that 62% of the bankruptcies filed in America is caused by medical bills. And this kind of scary statistic there is 77% of those people have health insurance.
Wow.
So it shows it's not enough. And there's so many different things that come into play when you have a serious medical problem, not just the medical expenses, but the everyday living expenses, the income, the travel, sometimes childcare. There's so much that's involved in that. Another little pamphlet, so why others like offering Aflac to their employees. Obviously it's going to help in your hiring and retaining employees when you can offer a bigger benefit package. Helps to keep you competitive with other companies or other employers, improves the morale, showing that you care. Enhances your current benefit package, the rising cost of major medical health plans. This is a way to kind of offset some of those co-pays and deductibles if you're having to maybe kind of inch those up like a lot of people are. We have wellness benefits on a lot of our plans to help with routines. Your part-time people would be eligible for these benefits as well. We handle all your enrollments, your claim processing, take care of any issues that they're ready to deal with billing, enrollments, all that. We take care of that for you. It can be, this is little or no cost to your company, so there's really three ways to set this up. It's 100% employee funded. You let the employees look at the different benefit options. They pick and choose what they want. They pay for it out of their paycheck. You can decide that you wanted to cover some of those costs, set a dollar amount aside and say, we will cover it up to this portion of benefits and let them pick and choose which benefits they want to spend that money on. What type of coverage, like if they want individual or family coverage. Or a lot of companies like to pick a certain plan and put one plan in place to cover every employee. A lot of times that's either a cancer plan or an accident plan or a life insurance. We see a lot of those. So that would be every employee will cover the cost of the individual policy of this type of plan and then the other things would be employee paid out of their paychecks. Aflac's easy to understand once it's explained to people. If you've never been offered that in the workplace and maybe not familiar with supplemental benefits and how it works, it takes a little bit of explaining and education, but once that's in place, people seem to understand how we work really well. Claims are very easy. They can get it online. You have an app or some people still prefer the little paper forms and then we can print those out and they'll do it. But that's what they prefer. Cost, very inexpensive. I'm just going to give a rundown of like a typical accident plan and some of the benefits it has. And then you've got a breakdown there of some typical costs. Now, there's different levels to each plan, so until we're actually doing an enrollment, it's hard to say exactly, but these are within a few cents. Level four accident plan would give your employees a $1,500 benefit if they were hurt or injured and had to be admitted to the hospital. That is a long way for helping with co-pays, deductibles, missed work, a lot of things like that. It would also increase that benefit to $2,500 if they were admitted to the ICU. On top of those benefits, it's paying them $300 per day while they're in the hospital. And then for the ICU days, it adds another $500 to that. So that's a lot of help. But just their initial treatment.
What does that plan usually run?
That one is right around $30 per month and I've got a chip breakdown here. This one is, and I think, and I actually put your rate sheets as by weekly because I believe that's how you pay.
Yeah, that's how we pay.
So if it's, if it's paid by the employee apparel deducted, that's how we present the pricing is per paycheck. But if you guys wanted to cover part of that, it would just be more like a monthly. You would still be billed this way. So that plan is right at $25 to $30 a month per individual for the accident plan. But there's a whole list of benefits, you know, I'm just getting started. The ER benefits for your doctor, visit x-rays, ambulance transport. It also has blood and plasma, major diagnostics like CT, MRI. Your follow-up care when you go back to the doctor, if you're prescribed therapy. It's got benefits for therapy. Those are $40 for up to 10 therapy visits. It gives appliance benefits like braces, wheelchairs, prosthesis benefits, rehab facility, money for home modifications like ramps or railing. This one's $4,000 to help with those types of costs. It also has other benefits like the death benefit if you're killed. This one's $50,000. That's a lot of help. The wellness benefit, what's per year, $60 for doing any routine care. They can use that for a dental visit, vision visit or a doctor's checkup. And has travel and transportation, lodging benefits as well if they have to be more than 50 miles from home for any of the hospital stays or follow-up surgeries. Helps a lot with that. So I put you a few prices in here just so you have an idea of what this costs. It's not expensive. This little booklet here shows the different types of policies that would be available. We don't usually kind of present all of this to the employees, but they are available. The accident, the cancer, and then the short-term disability are probably their top three plans. A lot of people like air critical illness, especially if you have a family history of heart disease, that's a great plan. Cancer plan, uh, for kind of a mid-level cancer plan, twelve dollars a week or by weekly per payday. That can also be set up, so these are pre-tax deducted, so they're saving taxes on that money, reducing their taxable income and then also in turn, that's going to reduce the FICA taxes that you guys have to pay. So, everybody gets a little tax break on that. And one other thing I wanted to talk to you about was what we call value-added service. And this would be, you guys could take a vote or pick one of these services and we give this to every employee, pay no charge and it's part of your benefit package. Aflac just asked that you let us see at least seventy-five percent of the employees and, and offer them the bonus. Uh, but it's things like telemedicine, your health insurance may have a telemedicine plan, uh, but every time they use that, that's calculated into your rental rates. Uh, so, you know, maybe it's a good idea to have a separate telemedicine plan, I'm steering your employees for that. So, they, when they're recalculating health rates, it's not going to show up on there. But there's a lot of good things on, on that list. See if they have any questions for answering.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you this back because I already, through my office, have Aflac and I can attest to how great it is.
Alright, well, thank you.
And I can answer some questions for folks too, because my, uh, my son has been accident-pronged in a few years and, uh, Aflac's lost a lot of money on him.
I'd like to do Aflac sunny away, so.
We're a big, we're a big fan, we think it's real good. And, uh, my employees fund their own. And, uh, I think everybody has one of the individual plans of some nature, uh, because you can get the cancer plan and the, yeah. And I've never met these nice people, by the way, so.
We didn't pay.
Much.
Everybody seems to have something they're concerned about, accident is a good plan for everybody, so short-term disability, if you're working because you need a paycheck. Uh, but cancer and critical illness is kind of based upon which family history is, what you've seen. We've all seen somebody diagnosed with cancer and go through cancer curtains. Uh, it's, it's rare to encounter somebody who's not, uh, but that affects some of us more than others and we, you know, feel differently about.
I think we did, Terry, don't you think accident would probably be the best for us, don't you agree? Missy mailed, uh, I don't know, accident, unless you stub your toe on the desk, maybe.
Best workers come.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as you don't fall off the chair, John, it'll be alright.
Air accident plan can be set up to cover you on the job and off the job, so it's twenty-four hour coverage. The short-term disability is normally just off-the-job injury-related disabilities and this thing, this is.
What percentage participation do you require?
We don't have to have a percentage, we just have to have a minimum of three people to, to start the program. Uh, and there's no minimum to keep it active, though we would expect with y'all's group that it would be an issue. But that's the great thing about Aflac too, is these are individual policies, once you get them in place, they're yours. Whether a participant drops off, your company drops it, um, you retire, quit, change jobs, you can keep them. We don't take them away.
That's great.
Yeah, it is. Especially, you know, for employees looking towards retirement, I, I see a lot of that and, and just realizing, hey, this stuff is not going to go with me, which a lot of stuff doesn't, especially life insurance. Really need to look at your life insurance when you're young and, and think about those things, like is this something I'm going to be able to keep?
Right.
When I, I get a retirement end, is the price going to triple and the coverage going to go down to ten percent? So, a lot of times that happens.
I haven't seen a claim denied here. Out, out of those that we've had, uh, within my family and the, uh, and the employees, it's, um, every claim has been paid. It's been paid quick, so that's, that's impressive.
Thank you, that is, I think, probably our claim to fame, is claims. And we pay quickly. And before COVID, we were paying claims within one to two days. But COVID, COVID.
I'd say your claim to fame is a duck.
And the duck. But any other questions, like I can give you an exact quote, are you thinking that maybe you guys might want to supply an accident plan to employees at that cost?
We may, uh, we're getting ready to do our budget, sort our budget process.
Let me get you, will you, I'll get you exact pricing before we go.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you a question too about the dental, is the dental included in this or is that a separate?
It's a separate policy, but it's part of the, the cafeteria plan and it's part of the offerings that you can do. It's not excluded. Do you guys need dental?
No, we have dental, dental through our, the local choice.
Yeah.
I don't even, I didn't know what they have, but I mean, I just wanted to.
Right, but maybe your part-time. Right, you can, you can have it as a supplement to that if you want, or your part-time people may be interested in, in having dental coverage. I'm gonna sit down, I'll get you some numbers, I'll write them down for you. The, you've got the numbers on the level three accident.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get you actual brochures on those policies.
Okay.
And, um, level three and four. The level four is not that much more expensive, but the coverage is higher. Thank you.
Thank you. No, you can go on, she'll get on, we'll, we'll move on to the agenda.
Any other public comments? That's how manager's report.
Missy mailed the license notices and, uh, for, uh, all business license notices. And, and plus, we've been collecting a lot of business licenses, haven't we, Missy?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, she also mailed, uh, the second property tax notices for unpaid taxes. Uh, we put Stoneville on Highland Drive, um, we've been, we began preparing for the annual budget. Um, if you all recall, when you all was attending the meetings last fall, um, we had Tamara Greer here from Roddy from Moss talking, uh, about our budget and, 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 uh, our income and, you know, our books look good, but all that, but, you know, our, our software was off a little bit. We've actually, uh, we, we, we have a pre-audit done every year with Hickock and Brown, David Brown out of Abingdon. He sent his guy, his, the guy that works for him, Matthew Boyd up, um, they did a pre-audit probably about a month ago, you imagine, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, uh, sent it over and, uh, but they still haven't been able to nail down where the software went off. So, anyways, he came back up last week, it was last week?
Wednesday, last Wednesday.
Last week. And we got him on the phone with Kathy from Southern Software and still, I mean, they figured out part of it, but they still can't, they can't track it down. He's going to reach out to Tamara Greer, cause she acted like it was a quick fix, didn't she?
Mm-hmm.
Tamara with Robert from Moss, I can fix it within an hour at most, did she not? So, anyways, uh, they're going to reach out to Tamara with Robert from Moss to see if they can get, if we can just get zero balance, if we can get it balanced going forward, I mean, there's no way that they can go back through those months and see. I mean, the money's in the bank, but it's just not lining up the software correct.
Right.
So, uh, anyways, that's been the deal. Uh, Chief and I met with Harold Hately on March fifth about a radio tower, ways we can improve our tower, uh, in Claypool Hill, um, we advertised for a, a small business recovery grant. It's on our Facebook page, we've had several people reach out. Uh, anybody locally that you all know that has a small business, maybe that they can get reimbursed for their rent or even their, uh, mortgage, dress, and you as well, did you probably, did you get that filled out? You, you, you got till March nineteenth to get it filled out. We, we can, Missy can print you off a copy, it's on our Facebook page, it's kind of initially has did the same thing, but it's the same, it's through the county, it's through tax county. But, uh, you'll get six months of just rent or mortgage, uh, reimbursed to you, for your business.
Cool.
So, same way for you, Jamie. Um, let me see here. Oh, Terry and, uh, Robert and Mitch installed a, uh, sign on Shawnee Lane that was down for a couple of weeks and, uh, Indian Springs Road, they put the, uh, speed limit sign up. During this past month, police received four thousand hazard stipend for, for COVID. Uh, was able to pay the officers a thousand dollars apiece. And, uh, we have begun cleaning, Robert, Mitch, Terry, uh, getting ready to clean the, uh, overlap part because we opened up on April one, Terry, April first, April, my favorite day of the year, April Fool's Day. If I call you April Fool's Day, I'm just telling you don't entry farm, because I will get you. But anyways, um, that's what we've been doing, that's my manager's report. I have any questions?
April Fool Day, I got married, so celebrate it, baby.
You'll never last.
When she wakes up in the morning, she says, thank you, Lord, I think it's for her husband, I don't know exactly.
You made it through.
Ms. Lindsey with the water department?
All the water samples came back good. All the meters were read on time, except for one, and that was due to flooding. A sewer line crossing had to be repaired on Indian Creek, below the town shop. And forty-two sewer manholes that were overflowing to the DEQ on Edge Wonder Drive, and that was due to heavy rains. That's it.
Mr. Smith from fire department?
I have duties for the fire department during the month of February. Three monthly meetings, zero calls during the month. Uh, we are resuming regular meeting schedules starting in March. Total hours of meeting, training, other things was eight hours. Total hours on call, zero. That's your report on that.
Mr. McLaughlin, police department?
Yes, sir, this is the February report. Total calls responded to were twenty-four, they worked one accident, made one arrest, made twelve traffic stops, issued, uh, six summons, and has traveled three thousand seven hundred and forty-three miles on the cruisers. Uh, they assisted one, uh, made one assist to another jurisdiction. And auxiliary officer hours, uh, there was eight, there were eight hours there. And the computer phone forensic scans, they had one of those. Also did some training in February, uh, on the ninth, the department completed a recertification in the CPR first aid Narcan use. And February the twenty-third, they completed the Virginia DCIS Asset Forfeiter Coordinator Training Online Course. What's that all about, Chief?
Oh, it's just the, all the changes in the paperwork.
Okay, just paperwork, yeah, I know, I know what to do there. Then in, uh, February the twenty-fifth, they had the department receive the second round of their COVID nineteen vaccinations. And, uh, February the eleventh, the department's cruisers were recalibrated by Southwest calibration and the certificates were filed with the courts. And on the seventeenth, the department's, uh, tuning forks for the radar units were recalibrated with two-way radio and the certificates were filed with the courts. They didn't do it.
Sounds like.
As always.
We have closed session items to discuss, including section two point two, that's three, seven, eleven, discussion of prospective business, consideration of investments of public funds and A seven legal litigation, crossroads engineering, project Peacock, project Ponzi, project Clinch River, project repository. Do I have a motion to enter closed session?
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion and a second to enter closed session, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes.
Mayor, you're out of line.
With respect to the just concluded closed session, to the base of each member's knowledge on the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the town council. This calls for a roll call vote, Mayor.
Mr. Smith? Mr. Stevens? Ms. Doug? Mr. Lindsey? Ms., uh, Boyd? Motion passes. Is there any council consents?
Oh, no, those are motions.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any motions coming out of closed session?
I want to make a motion to transfer the town banking services from Carter Bank and Trust to the National Bank.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second to transfer the town's banking services from Carter Bank and Trust to National Bank. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Aye.
Motion passes.
You got me.
Council consents? Mr. Smith, any council consents?
No. Am I supposed to?
I was just going, I was just going down the whole line, just, no, I was just.
Don't connect some concern.
Mr. Smith?
Ms. Doug?
Mr. Lindsey, council consents?
Yeah, I have a concern, I came to a meeting probably six months ago, nine months ago, and I was concerned over a particular item. And one of the councilmen said, well, we just might have to raise taxes. And I started thinking about that. Having to raise taxes possibly, and we've got a lot of debt on the books. I would say between personal property, real estate, water, sewer, we're probably carrying, it's hard to say, I look at the numbers, probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth. I just think it's time to do that before we ever have to raise taxes again.
To pull in the back taxes, yeah.
Yeah.
The delinquent taxes, and, and that's good, I mean, we'll get to that discussion now if we can. Mr. Rat, uh, you're only legally allowed to go back five years on personal property, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Six years now in utilities, I think.
Yeah, and, uh, of course, real estate taxes can be about three.
Three?
Real estate, twenty.
It's about twenty.
Real estate's twenty, personal property's five.
There was a, um, hang on a second, let me think about what the reality of that was. Well, yeah, it's twenty on real estate, I apologize.
You're fine.
Um, but, uh, my, my firm, as part of my representation, can help with the collection of back taxes. So, if there's, I mean, if you want to send out, uh, requests for payment, you know, one time and then move on some other way, we'd be glad to do that.
Why's your rates?
Um, you know.
We've already discussed those when we hired him, it's in his packet that I gave you. I'd say probably it's different, I mean, we, we got a, we, we bargained with him, we bargained with him.
We could, we could do it for the percentage of the.
It's a percentage, yeah, but I mean, our rates will be better than for just anybody out in the general public, so, and we're on recording here, so that was part of the bargaining agreement, I'm sure, you know.
When I was there, household bills were the, uh, a hundred fifty thousand, I thought they were around eighty-eight thousand. When I was there, household bills were the, a hundred fifty thousand, I thought they were around eighty-eight thousand.
Well, York's talking everything, he's talking personal property, real estate, and utility, he's talking utility as well, Johnny, like taxes, water bills.
I mean, at, at least people could set up a payment, a better, like a payment plan, so they could start paying.
Right.
That's, that's part of what's required.
York? John? You might want to add garbage collection in that too, I think we got some people who owes us for some garbage, and they're just, I don't know what they're doing, if they're paying that enough.
You can't break it down, the, uh...
It's all... We do have an issue with one customer, I don't want to mention it because we are on record here. I don't want to mention no one's name here, uh, uh, to cause any hard feelings, but there is one commercial account that we've had some issues with, there's some different, different, uh, things that we've looked into, maybe on how we can collect that. But, uh, it's, after the meeting and after everything, we, we can talk about it if one of you all want to know exactly. But it's a situation the town's been dealing with for probably seven or eight years, am I right, Terry?
Yep.
On the gar, on one of the garbage accounts.
It may be longer than that.
It may be longer than that, yeah, Terry, yeah. But I mean, it's, it was, it was going, going when I came, Tom was dealing with it, and it's just been a, you know. We continue to pick the trash up, just because, you know, it's in the historical part of the town, but, uh, we're not getting paid for it, so.
Well, may I say something, John, on that, to, uh, Brad? It's my understanding that even if someone owes us, uh, for the garbage pickup, haven't been paying us, we, do we still, if we go by his place, do we still have to pick his garbage up?
I don't know if there's a statute that says that, I've never seen it.
I've been told that we have to do that, because I just don't believe that we have to pick that up.
I don't think you do, because I've been done garbage for ten years.
I'm not aware of anything that, that requires that.
Well, maybe you need to work a label there too.
But here's the problem that, that we see, if we do not pick the trash up, it's going to build up, build up, build up, then cats get into it, Terry, and it's going to cost, you know, exactly what the sheriff was talking about here tonight, you know.
Can't you give them a ticket for littering? Because they left their trash out?
Well...
I mean...
It's a, it's a, it's a property owner slash right of way issue, is it not, Chief? So, I mean, it's just, uh...
Well, it's not fair to the citizens that pay for it, for it to go on allowing people who are not paying for it to continue.
Right.
And get their tickets for free.
I know.
It's not fair.
Look, like I said, give them a ticket for littering. They don't take it off the show.
I don't know who it is, don't have a clue at this point, but bottom line, you can't let one person do that when everybody else has it for it.
We have nuisance statutes though, and with a nuisance statute, for example, let's, let's use the height of grass. You know, if grass gets out of control, or a building's dilapidated, it's a nuisance, it has to be resolved or abated. Then we can apply that thing of, uh, moderate to the garbage collection, and make that amount a, uh, essentially like a tax lien against the property. So, uh, that's, that's a possibility using this nuisance statute.
There you go.
We may have to do something about that for garbage.
Because it's not right.
We need to help John about that.
Okay.
You know, it's amazing what people can do, a guy one time told me, he was working the TV cable people, and he, uh, couldn't turn off the TV. But they said they still didn't have the money to pay for, pay the bill. So he'd start out there, and he said, I get out there to where the pole is, and they hauled at me, tell me to come back, and they give me the money. And that's what, I mean, I understand, people have got more money than they, they just don't want to pay the bill.
That's just it.
They'll find a way.
See what they can get by with.
That's the problem, that you can't, you can't be fair to the citizens of the whole town by letting one person do that.
Well, they can't get by with it for so long, now they think that they'll never have to pay it.
Well, I pay trash pickup, and I never use it, so, I take it to my shop. But it gets, it gets the town money, so I pay it.
Right. What happened if it threw up the creek?
Same thing happened, they get it thrown on the road.
Well, I mean...
As high as said, yes.
Throw it in the creek, and, uh, we dealt with the same thing down Richland, if they didn't say it, they'd take it somewhere else, file it out, throw it the road, throw it beside the roads.
Well, if you can find mail in there with their address and any of all that, you can prosecute, you can give them off the tickets.
You can't do that.
Really?
There's no presumption of guilt.
Yep.
I thought that's how they were catching a lot of people. I did. I have to put some cameras, using cameras that.
Well, we, we have those cameras, so, I'm talking about the planes, and we've, we've made charges on, on the cameras, so, we've got them if anybody needs them.
That's good.
But that's what you're going to deal with, the water, I mean, it's, it might end up with Joe Blair, or it might end up with Johnny Smith. You have another one, especially with that?
What's about the plants?
It's right, right.
Are we currently pressuring anybody about houses that are not up to date, or? We got a, our house or two in town, that's been there for years. Children play in them, I bet, people call me and say, hey, we got children out here in these houses. And I told them I had a check on it, I forgot to do it, but... It's a mootsens, I guess you'd call it.
Well, if they're contacting you, should they be contacting us, to let us know to check on these things?
According to them, they contacted somebody here, and then they were...
I've never, I've never seen a plane on a, children playing in a abandoned house.
Mr. Boyd, do you have any council consents?
No.
Mr. McGlaughlin? Mr. Lindsey?
Just a general discussion.
Just general discussion, yeah. Well, I was going to make a motion that we turn the collections over to Brad Ratliff.
I'll say it.
By the way, I will have to say something about that, I think we have an agreement with Brad.
We do.
And, and we have a percentage, Johnny, you ask, I think it's, uh...
It's in that page, it's...
Twenty-five, twenty-five percent, he's collecting, charging to collect them. That's a good deal for everybody, really.
Good deal.
We got that in place. I guess all we need to do is let Brad know what, we need to make the move to do it.
There will be...
Good, now, a motion and a second to turn over the... Well, how should I word that? To turn over the delinquent accounts to our, our town attorney, Mr. Ratliff, and the Ratliff Law Firm, for collection. All in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion passes.
I think you should add in the percent that he's charging for, for that motion, it should have been in the...
He, he wants to amend his motion, go ahead and amend your motion, Mr. Lindsey. I think it was, what, twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent, yeah.
Mr. Lindsey, will you amend your motion to twenty-five percent of what Brad, the Ratliff Law Firm will be getting?
Yes.
You, do you amend your second, Miss Amy Doug?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second's been amended, all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Anything else, any more concerns, comments? I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I have a motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn this meeting, all in favor, vote aye? Motion passes. Motion passes.